Good evening, welcome to the October 29th meeting of the Millis School Committee. I will start by announcing that this meeting is being recorded and can be viewed on Mondays at 7 o'clock on Comcast Channel 8 or Verizon Channel 37. All meeting videos are also posted on the Millis Public Schools website under School Committee. Next we'll start, attendance.
Here.
Robin?
Here.
Superintendent?
Here.
Steve?
Present.
Denise?
Here.
Student representatives?
Here.
Teacher representative? Ryan? Alright, um, why don't we go, we're gonna go a little bit out of order. Why don't we start with student representatives? The varsity group of boys soccer teams begin their playoff games next week. The first term ends this Friday, November 1st. There is an early release day November 6th. And parent teacher offices will be held in the afternoon on November 6th from 12:00 to 2:30 and in the evening on the 14th of November from 6 to 8. Thanks, Ben.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ben.
Ryan?
Okay, so students at Clyde Brown have started using the new rock wall in the gymnasium during biz ed. Students are excited and have reported that it's more challenging than they anticipated. Students will work throughout the year on setting and achieving personal climbing goals. The Scholastic Book Fair was a big success this week and last week. And Clyde Brown will have an all-school assembly next Thursday, November 7th, which will be a salute to veterans to honor the service of veterans and active military service members in our Clyde Brown community. Officer Vicar and Elise Malloy will meet with all male members on Thursday, October 31st to discuss safety awareness. And the Open Circle Parent Caregiver Program begins next Thursday, November 7th. This is a three-session program focused on social emotional learning. Parents and caregivers will learn vocabulary that is used in Open Circle at Clyde Brown and how to apply these skills and strategies at home. And our middle school's scary stories will be read in the library on Thursday. This is the high school's creative writing group's stories that are read by the high school's speech class to middle school students. And earlier today, the library teen council held an after-school scary stories event for students and the council members read the stories. Grade 6 had a fantastic day at the science exam last week doing a scavenger hunt and seeing the IMAX movie about national parks. Some great hands-on stuff. Little school students used some teamwork and thought-solving skills to design and build their own scarecrows. It was good to have an opportunity to give back to merit after all that they have given us. And for the high school, the first issue of the hot post will be released tomorrow. New co-editors are seniors Olivia McClary and Jackie Welby. The Chem Club celebrated National Chemistry Week with their annual trip to the grade 3 at Clyde Brown for weather-related activities, as well as a new activity, the production and canning of applesauce from apples that were donated by Tangerine's farm. The club explored the old-school methods of collecting, cleaning, sorting, chopping, cooking, mashing, and then canning the apples as an application of the gas laws. And rehearsals for Turpsicuri's 10th Annual Production of the Nutcracker are in full swing. Approximately 150 students are involved in this year's productions between onstage and offstage roles. The three performances in December feature different cast of dancers each performance, and the students are very excited to take over the new lighting system. The Nutcracker performance will be December 6 through 8. And the Millis High School Marching Band performed on October 20th at the Boston Common as the kickoff band for the American Diabetes Association's annual Step Out Walk to Defeat Diabetes. The high school concert band and chorus will present their winter concert on Thursday, December 19th at 7:00 p.m. And on November 7th, the 10th, we will participate in the annual Veteran Interview Project.
Thanks, Rob. Jody, do we have anybody standing for open session?
Yes, we do, Senator Conover. Representative Shottin, please.
Excellent. You like it?
Well, we'll...
Yes.
That'd be great, thank you.
I apologize, we were told we were on the agenda, so I was like, alright. And I apologize for my interesting entire, I coach football, so I just went away.
It's all good.
Playoff game tomorrow, so got priorities.
Oh, good luck.
I'm a little muddy, but I like it.
Just be careful of the cord.
Hello, my name is Mia Frazoko, senior analyst. Thank you for letting me speak on behalf of this important initiative. Motivated by the 2012 tragedy in Sandy Hook and multiple tragedies that have occurred in the ensuing years, what has become known as the Hartford Consensus was convened to bring together leaders from law enforcement, the federal government, and the medical community to improve survivability from man-made or natural mass casualty events. The resulting injuries from these events generally present with severe bleeding which, if left unattended, can result in death. The participants of the Hartford Consensus concluded that by providing first responders and civilian bystanders the skills and basic tools to stop uncontrolled bleeding in an emergency situation, lives would be saved. The first responder program has received very good response and is widely being used across the country. The next step is to focus on needs of civilian bystanders. This is where the Stop the Bleed program comes into play. Civilians need basic training in bleeding control principles so they are able to provide immediate frontline aid until first responders are able to take over care of an injured person. Due to many situations, there may be a delay between the time of injury and the time of first responders on the scene. It takes five minutes for a person to bleed out and, on average, 10 minutes for a first responder to arrive. Additionally, in chaotic events, there is the chance that first responders may not be able to get to victims. Without civilian intervention in these circumstances, preventable deaths will occur. The American College of Surgeons Committee on Trauma is leading the effort to save lives by teaching the civilian population to provide vital initial response to stop uncontrolled bleeding in emergency situations. This will be accomplished by the development of a comprehensive and sustainable bleeding control education and information program targeted to civilians that will inform, educate, and empower the 300 million-plus citizens of the United States. Sean Dooley, our state representative, has written a bill for mandatory placement of bleeding control kits in all public buildings. My goal is to assist in this initiative by teaching Stop the Bleed to teachers and classmates, as well as placement of Stop the Bleed kits in our schools. Representative Dooley has graciously agreed to donate a number of kits to Millis Public Schools, and I am asking for your approval to accept these kits to be placed in our high school. In addition, I plan to fundraise for additional kits to be placed in the elementary school and for a training kit so that this initiative can continue after I graduate. Thank you.
Is this Captain saying anything, or do you want me to say?
So, hi. I'm Lisa Frazoko. I am a general acute care and trauma surgeon at Beth Israel Deaconess. So here we have an example of a tertiary provider, a first responder, and a civilian. And I think it takes all of us to help save lives in these situations. And it doesn't have to be a mass casualty event. It can be an accident with a coffee machine. It can be a car accident. It can be a farm accident. So the goal of this initiative is to teach people to get out of the role of bystander and into the role of immediate responder. So all of you who aren't medically trained would be those immediate responders. So that's the goal of this initiative. So we're gonna teach, and we're gonna ideally get a whole lot of bleeding control kits around our community and teach people how to use them.
And I just wanted to thank Dr. Frazoko. She was the one that originally brought this to my attention three years ago, and since then we've been, I've been very fortunate to work with American College of Surgeons, you know, Mass Nurses Association. This has become the number-one priority for Children's Hospital this year. And so what I did was, in order to try to show the state how easy it was, I had kits made for my schools, and I personally purchased them and have been delivering them. Then we were doing training. We actually had testimony today. So Elise actually took over the training for, over at KP High School, teaching teachers today. And the kit, and the nice things about these, you know, we had them designed so they would actually fit in with the AED. Actual kit, it actually slides right in there. No extra cost or anything of that. You put it in there, you open the kit up, you know, and the alarm automatically goes off and it sends a call to 911. Right now, in the number-one cause of death under age 45 is trauma. One-third of those are bleeding control-related. So, you know, they estimate, you know, so, I think it was 120,000 cases per year would be saved by having people being trained with bleeding control and just having the basic tools. And it's more important than just the training, you also have to have the tools, because sometimes, you know, people are like, "Oh, I know how to do a tourniquet, I'll use a belt." That's great if you really know what you're doing, but if you don't really know what you're doing, you could actually cut off all the tertiary veins, but not actually get the main artery, which is the problem, that's actually bleeding. So you actually create a worse scenario.
It's tough with those improvised tourniquets to actually get adequate bleeding.
And so, I'll show you this. So this is three different, each one of the packages has three different packets in there. I'll pass it around. This is the one I have opened up, so you guys can take a look at it. The tourniquet's actually the cat tourniquet, which is that same one used by military. So this has all been tested and used in the field. There's gauze in here, there's hemostatic gauze, which means it's treated with blood-clotting properties, safety, and everything like this. And to give you an idea of how, everyone talks about, oh, mass trauma and these things, you know, that are these horrific events, but the reality is, this happens every single day. We had an incident in, actually in Norfolk this weekend on Saturday. There was an eight-year-old boy climbing a fence, it was at a baseball game, and slipped, fell off the fence, landed on his mother's full-up little metal chair. It broke, punctured him in the buttocks, severed an artery, immediately started to bleed out. Fortunately, God bless, there was a doctor on the other team, you know, a parent on the other team rushed over, actually knew how to do bleeding control, actually reached in and was able to pinch off the artery. He'd lost enough blood that they actually had to lifeline him out of there. And he's, you know, everything's good right now, but he was saved by someone understanding bleeding control. A complete freak accident. The, you know, I talked to the first responders, the paramedics that were on the scene later, and, you know, he was a six-minute response time. He was eight-years-old. He would've brought blood out. He probably would've let out in another minute or two, or it would've been substantial damage. And but, so what we're doing is, in the schools, is we're actually placing this, but we're also doing a train-the-trainer model, you know, so it can go on from generation to generation. You know, so, you know, what we've been positioning so far is, each school picks three or four or five teachers. We've already actually had the training here in Millis. Dr. Frazoko hosted it last spring. And we've been training, we've been training the, you know, administrators, janitorial staff, because they're throughout the building, it could often, you know, they're a little more volatile, obviously the nurse, and then several teachers that are interested. Depending on the state, you know, in North Carolina, they've gone one step forward. Every single teacher in the state of North Carolina is training. They do a train-the-trainer model where all, one or two people from each school goes to a regional training, then they all go back and continually add the, they teach. This has been, we've been able to do some great things. We, one of the doctors I worked with, Eric Rolbeck, who's a surgeon at the Brigham, is also the medical director for Gillette Stadium. So we're the first stadium in the country or in the world that is fully stop the bleeding line. All the vendors have all been trained, we have these things all over. As you go around, you'll start noticing it, it's been a lot more places. We know how it is in Logan Green Airport, we finally got it a few months ago in the State House. So we're trying to get it in more and more places. But this kind of is back to the day of, you know, having AEDs. And this is a much simpler, much cheaper solution. And the training is very simple. The training, on average, takes you 45 minutes and an hour. So it's not complicated. And it teaches you how to do the tourniquet, and also teaches you how to dress a wound, pack a wound, and actually apply pressure. So the process is relatively easy, and, you know, what we're trying to do is do some online follow-up training, just to, you know, make sure people are feeling and are able to have a good fast play. But the reality is, the more people get trained and the more people, and as it extrapolates out, it's, like it was in the 70s or late 80s or, you know, late 80s, early 90s, you know, no one had ever heard of them before, and now people are very comfortable with using them. Because, you know, let's face it, there's, whether it's an injury on a football field, we have several deaths every year, you know, a laceration or a fracture or something like that, where there's a uncontrolled bleeding situation and no one knows what to do. Or, you know, we had one at KP where the kid ended up, you know, it was very traumatic, you know, it didn't end up being a bleed-out situation, but it became much more traumatic by getting the right people in place at the right time. So that was one of the things that I wanted to do, was to prove to the state how easy this is and how inexpensive it is. I mean, it's, you know, each kit, you know, roughly costs, you know, for a package of three, it must be about $100. So it's not an overwhelming cost, but I know, as school committee, I can't just give it to the school, as a former chair of school committee, it was one of the things I always thought was funny, that we have to vote to accept a gift. I'm like, yep, if you want to bring a gift, we will vote to accept it. So I just wanted to kind of present this and make sure, see if you guys had any questions, if there was anything you would like to know. Having a surgeon here is, who can speak much more intelligently toward these issues than I can, but happy to answer any questions or if there's anything else you would like.
We're also happy to come back and train you guys if you're in the point. I mean, we see how easy it was.
Yeah. Yeah. No, I would like that.
We actually have the school committees, the KP School Committee that we have trained, and as well as the Board of Health, I think November 17th, one of those days. So we're doing, we're hosting a training. Actually, children's hospitals coming down to do that one. They wanted to come down and do one as well. So they're doing that, and then plus a few other teachers and administrators that couldn't come, that we just couldn't come to the daytime training. So it really is a, it will say one, it is one of these where, you know, God forbid there's a horrific event, it's there. Boston Marathon bombing, we had no casualties of people that were hospitalized, because it happened at the finish line. And we had so many first responders then who were able to do Stop the Bleed. It was all bleeding control. And with zero of the people that made it, you know, that went to the hospital, lives were lost. And that's a credit to be where it happened.
And that was both real tourniquets and improvised tourniquets, just from both the medical providers that were at the scene and the bystanders, the red racks of T-shirts for marathon sports and Millis tourniquets.
Mr. Chair. Thank you, all three of you, for being here, and I, this is a great effort. I'm glad to see that it's not just here, but it's going throughout the state. How many kits would we need with the two buildings?
Well, need, I mean...
What would an ideal number be?
I was gonna say, I mean, in a perfect world, I put one in every class. I mean, you know, that's what North Carolina's done. That's probably too much. You know, what I've done, you know, my donation was I did one for every, at every AED. So, you know, basically three at every AED. And so I think...
One kit of three.
Right. One kit of three.
So one red, one red bag in each AED.
Obviously, you know, if you're gonna be doing some fundraising and things along those lines, it would be great for, you know, the athletic department to have one, it would be great for the P, you know, to have one, great for the nurse to have one, you know, I mean, to have additional ones, you know, and I should've brought it, but I have like a little small individual one that I keep, you know, in my truck, that has, you know, it's just an individual one. But it would be great to get some of those as well, to actually have, you know, on the football field with trainers and things along those lines. And the only other thing I would say is, I would caution, and I hadn't even realized this, but evidently there was, there's been a couple problems around the country where people have gone online and created, you know, designed their own kit, and they've actually bought tourniquets, you know, that were made in China and things like that. So, you know, that was one of the things that we, everything we spec'd out was military-grade, so we, you know, it costs a little bit more, like the tourniquet, I think ended up being like $29, which is the majority of it. But, and you get it cheaper, but it doesn't have the, you know, it has, it's windless and doesn't matter which way you twist it, it seals either way, it tightens either way, so it's pretty much idiot-proof. But it's also steel cable, you know, airplane cable, so it can't be broken. So those are the sort of things that I learned today during the, when Mass Medical Society was testifying on behalf of the Bill. So that, that's one of the things that they're trying to, make sure people understand that, you know, if you're gonna, we need to have the training, but we also need to have the right equipment in place, because without the right equipment, you could actually cause, you know, cause damage, and nobody wants to do that. If you're gonna be a first responder, try to help people, make sure, make its...
So Mia, is this your senior project?
Yes.
So when do you think you'll be, when will you think you'll know how much you can fundraise? Because I don't, we don't want to take away from your senior project, but clearly we want to make sure whatever you don't, you can't raise, we supplement and make sure we're appropriately, we have the appropriate amount in the school.
Thank you. Well, I, so I plan on fundraising for additional kits, like Representative Dooley said, to have with the athletic training and with the nurse, and I also plan to fundraise for a training kit so I can go into the physical education classes and at the end of their CPR training, also teach them this, because it's, it'll take one class period, it wouldn't take everyone though. And when I would have the money to, I'm not sure.
So how about this? I know, so you'll have your senior project, you do the presentations, they do them in April, May. It's not always easy for us to get to see those presentations, I've done them a couple of times, and they're awesome. Would you come back around that time and tell us how you did, what your goal was, kind of maybe a smaller version of your, or the same presentation you give for your senior project? And we can then talk about closing?
Making up the difference. Making up the delta.
Yeah.
Yes, absolutely.
Awesome. Yeah, this is, no, this, and I know Elise has been doing this and working on this for a couple of years in her professional capacity, so we're lucky that she's willing and able to come and help and be a voice of expertise in this as well, so.
And we're also fortunate, Chief Barrett and himself and several of the other firefighters are also trained as instructors. So that's one of the other, from a statewide rollout standpoint, you know, EMS has been 100% on board, the fire chiefs, you know, the DFM, all 100% on board. So they've been conducting a lot of trains with us, so it's great, we're gonna get a dock down, but, you know, what we try to do is have it as a five-to-one ratio. So we're able to bring in some EMTs and paramedics and really, you know, get the whole crowd, but it's nice that they're here. So when they're back in, it's really easy to do a refresher, because it's not hard, but you can, you know, just like anything else, CPR or anything like that, you learned it, I think I remember, you know, you want to have a refresher once a year, even if it's for, you know, 10 minutes of, oh, yep, yep, alright. I do remember that correctly, I'm going for it, because I know at Gillette, they check, they train, in the first year they had an 89% success rate, then they retrained it the second year without, you know, before the training, and it dropped down to about a 70%. You know, so they retrained and then they got to like a 90 rate. You know, but, you know, just happened one year, 19%, and kind of fallen off and, you know, perfected the score, was a little uncertain. So it's repetition, and it's just, you know, again, it's just gonna be discussion and having this out there. And then, you know, there's a slip and fall at your house, or, you know, or a car wreck, or whatever it is. It's, you know, or a kid falling on a metal chair and having a pole go, you know, but, you know, it's, it almost sounds funny till you realize it, you know.
Yeah.
Something that freaky could've cost a little, you know, a little kid his life. So we were very positive. The doctors, what I would've, you know, would like to have is, you know, having bleeding control kits on playgrounds as well. What we've also done is the Cape Cod Fire Chiefs Association has purchased bleeding control kits for all the beaches. So they're at all the lifeguard stations, and they're substantially bigger and they're larger group cases, but they're, they have enough material in there for sharp knives, because they've been able to actually, you know, a couple of them you can't, but, you know, but, I think the two-foot-by-three-foot square of hemostatic dressing, and they have a couple of those, so you're able to do really large rooms and really, you know, do a lot of wrapping. So, but they've got the entire Cape covered, now, base side and outside. And Providence down just last week bought one for their, for their town here, because they're just, like, you know what, the more, you know, we see this, you know, that it's relatively cheap from a state budget and for a town budget standpoint, you know, it goes, you know, 30, 40 bucks a, you know, a kit. It's been very, very positive so far, so hopefully we'll continue that motion.
It's easily adaptable.
It's easily adaptable. There is no downside, there's no, you're not worried about, you know, them going bad, you're not worried about batteries dying, you're not worried about, you know, that's one of the problems we have with AEDs and training people with AEDs, they're nervous about putting on pads and dealing with electricity, you know. Putting on a tourniquet is pretty, it's pretty hard to screw up, or packing, you know, whether it's a, wherever the wound is, every little bit has.
I think one of the things that comes out in the education sessions is that you can't hurt someone. If they have life-threatening bleeding, they're gonna die if you do nothing, so anything you do is better than doing nothing. So that's something that people get comfortable with after taking the training session.
Mr. Chair. I make a motion to accept the Stop the Bleed kits presented by Representative Dooley as part of Mia Frazoko's senior project. Do I, how many are we getting?
We'll just, I'll work, I'll look at the superintendent to figure out how many.
The appropriate, accept the appropriate of all.
I think they said, I think they said you have three AEDs in the schools, one in each?
I'll have to double-check.
Double-check, I remember that.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to accept a minimum of three Stop the Bleed kits up to 10.
That works.
That works.
Second.
It's been moved in secret. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
And actually, Representative Dooley, on behalf of the school committee, we'd like to present you with just a thank-you letter. Please accept our sincere thanks on behalf of the Millis Public Schools and the Millis School Committee for your donation of the Stop the Bleed kits and for your efforts to pass a bill for mandatory placement of bleeding control kits in all public buildings. You have also spent time in our high school to help increase the knowledge about the importance of these kits and to raise awareness of their need. Thank you for collaborating with our student Mia Frazoko and her mother, Dr. Frazoko, on this endeavor. We are very grateful for your efforts to help save lives. Thank you.
Thank you.
I wish I had more. Really, really easy.
I think we all do.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Representative.
And here is your, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Next, I want to jump down to superintendent's report. Superintendent's award?
Yes, and I would like to invite up to the table also, or up here in front, Alexi Valencourt and her family. No? Well, we do take pictures, family pictures too, after presentations, so it is my great pleasure to award a certificate of academic excellence to Alexi Valencourt for the, from the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents. Alexi, having duly qualified under the standards prescribed by the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents, is hereby awarded the certificate of academic excellence. Alexi is an excellent student at Millis High School and has been decorated with a host of awards. She is a National Merit Scholarship Commended Student, our school's recipient of the Harvard Book Award, selection for the Society of Women Engineers Certificate of Merit with High Honors, and the University of Rochester Bosch &amp; Lom Honorary Science Award, along with being an AP Scholar with Honors. A Spanish Immersion student as well, when she's not studying, Alexi is lending a hand wherever she can. She holds a top leadership role with three organizations in our school, co-president of the Student Council, president of the National Honor Society, and secretary of the Chemistry Club. Alexi is a member of our LEOS Club and a student ambassador to the HOBE, Hugh O'Brien Youth Leadership Program in Massachusetts. Alexi is also a decorated soccer player and a major contributor to why our... Alexi is also a decorated soccer player and a major contributor to why our soccer team has won back-to-back state championships. As captain of the team this year, Alexi is a three-time league All-Star, and last year was named the Eastern Mass Girls Soccer Division, Division Four South, and the Boston Globe Division Four Player of the Year, as well as Boston Herald All Scholastic. She also won a national title with her travel team, the Scorpion Soccer Club in the U-17 Division of the Elite Clubs National League this past summer. She is an outstanding role model for our students, a natural leader in our school, and a most deserving recipient of the superintendent's award. Congratulations, Alexi.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Alexi.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Don't go far. We do take pictures.
Oh, I thought you had one in. Alright people, squish together. Oh, that's not bad, I got you one. One, two, three, one, two, three, what? Cheese. Cheese. Okay, Nancy, do you want to do one alone with Alexi?
Yeah.
I'd be honored. One, two, three, cheese. Are we good, or?
Thank you so much.
You're very. Congratulations.
Alright. Sorry. No, why don't we move to, jump up to the action items, just do them minutes.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Catalano.
I make a motion to approve the September, no.
Yep.
The September 24?
No, October 15.
No, we have the October 15.
Oh, sorry.
I'd like to amend the action item, I'd like to amend the action item to the consideration to approve the 10-15-2019 meeting minutes.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Catalano.
I now make a motion to approve the October 15-2019 school committee meeting.
It's been moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Alright, now, why don't we just go in order, we'll do the Time and Learning High School Improvement Plan. Mr. Malane.
So, at your last meeting, you, Superintendent presented the district improvement plan, the school improvement plan is aligned with that district plan, and so I've included a copy of the school improvement plan that Jody sent to you all, and this is just kind of some of the highlights, and at any time, if you have any questions or anything like that, feel free, or if you prefer to wait to the end, that works too. Just to recap the past school year, we had another outstanding year here at Millis High School, and I think that the two young ladies who were here before me speak a lot to the type of kids that we have here, and the type of things they're capable of, and the type of people they are. So they are a hard act to follow, but some of the recognition we received as a high school, once again, we're in the US News and World Report's Best High Schools in America, we ranked among the top 6% nationally, we were ranked by US News and World Report's 48th in Massachusetts and 39th in the Boston Metro Region. We were also selected or recognized by the J. Matthews Challenge Index, and this is an index that looks at students' opportunities to do challenging work in high school. For Millis, the metric was participation in AP coursework, the ability for our kids to take challenging college coursework. We were also recognized by, with the College Success Award, and this award is a, comes as a function of our kids not only graduating, but going on to college and succeeding in college, so they look at postgraduate data, and we were recognized by great schools with the College Success Award. Boston Magazine had us 55th among Massachusetts high schools, and we had, we had 112 students took at least one AP exam last year. It's our highest ever, year before we were at 111, so we're trending in the right direction.
I'll take it.
And some of the things that, some of the highlights of last year, of course, we just had Alexi, our captain, back-to-back state championships in soccer, so Alexi's going for a three-peat this year. Our TV production and film students did outstanding work, they were honored at the Salem Film Festival, they were honored at the Notre Dame Film Festival, New York, all over the country, and even some international recognition with our films students. Art awards, we had a number of kids earn Gold Key Awards. The Mohawk Post, our student newspaper, was recognized by the New England Scholastic Press for their work. Chorus went to Six Flags New England and came in first place in the choral competition last April, and girls' basketball team, they kicked us out of Division Four because we won so much, and so we decided that we were going to win Division Three. We also had a number of our students in the news, very pertinent to what Mia was talking about. We have in the top left there, that's Shaun White demonstrating CPR and the Heimlich maneuver on Channel Four. Below him, we have another senior project, Kyle Wilcox, his senior project last year was giving back to the NICU, and he was featured on Five for Good. The bottom right is actually the Gold Key photograph by Adriana Aguiho Gutierrez, who won a Gold Key in the Boston Globe Scholastic Art Contest, and that picture was actually, I don't know if any of you saw it, when they did the story on it, that was a full-page picture above the fold in the Boston Globe, full color, amazing achievement, and Adriana has continued with her work in photography, and she was actually at our homecoming dance last Saturday night taking pictures, and just as an aside, the two young ladies who were here represent 40% of our homecoming court, so it shows that our, their fellow students recognize what they're giving to the school. And then in the top right, we gained some international press, this was a senior project of Rose Cola, who went to Normandy, France, and laid wreaths at the 307 graves of unknown American soldiers, and an amazing senior project, and again, garnered international recognition. Our students are also involved in a lot of service last year, our advisory program, each advisory, which is a group of 10 to 12 kids that meet bi-weekly with the same staff member for their four-year experience in high school, and each advisory each year takes on a service project, ranging from, there's one advisory that gets involved with Kiva loans in developing nations, donations to the Millis Food Pantry, gift wrapping, working with, in nursing homes, so it's something that each advisory decides as a group, a way to give back. So we have, you know, essentially every student here in the school does some type of service project each year. We once again had volleyball for a cure, we just had it again a couple weeks ago, and that's been an amazing success, and raised a lot of money for cancer research, Special Olympics, just a phenomenal program, and so many of our kids are involved as competitors and as buddies who help out. We have a number of service clubs, including Peer Leaders that Mrs. Dunn is a co-advisor for, the LEOS Club does amazing things in our community, the National Honor Society, so we have a number of clubs that give back, and then last year we also had our first cornhole tournament, which was a great way to raise some money and to have a lot of fun and some school spirit, and the winning team of Mr. Kendrick and Mrs. Sporano defeated all comers, students and staff alike, and then they, the winner of the tournament decides what charitable organization the funds go to. So that was a great success last year, and I'm pretty hopeful that it'll continue this year.
It's now on ESPN, you know.
Oh, I know.
All the time, it's amazing.
It's, it's.
They should train, they can go.
They were pretty good. My partner was the athletic director, and frankly, I expected more.
Timestamp this and show him this.
And so, last school committee meeting, I believe, the Director of Curriculum, Joan Lynn, spoke a little bit about MCAS and gave you some information on that. This is just a, kind of a brief snippet of what, you know, what the report card looks like, or the information looks like for the high school for a number of indicators, MCAS and otherwise, and I'll just kind of go to it, you know, kind of quickly, but if you have questions, certainly I'll take them. First of all, this was the first year that our grade 10 students took the Next Generation MCAS, which is the online computer-based testing, so we don't have five-year averages quite yet, this is our first year doing it. The Next Generation MCAS is certainly more rigorous than what they call the Legacy MCAS, and, you know, for example, we had 71% of our students were in the meets the standard or exceeds the standard category. Under the old MCAS, the Legacy MCAS, we typically had 98 to 99% of the kids performing at proficient or above, so it's certainly a more rigorous test. It's the first time that our students and all 10th grade students have taken it, so we wound up with 71% of our kids scoring at meets or exceeds, and that's a 10-point difference than the state average, so we're above the state average, we're happy with that, would like to see that, 71, certainly would like to see that increase as we, you know, work with this test more. Mathematics, same situation, we were at 72% in the top two categories, while the state was at 59%. The science, technology, and engineering test, which for most of our students is the biology test, that's still, last year, it was the last paper-based version for the students, and we have our ninth graders take it, and so those numbers are something we can look back on for five years, and so we had 82% in the top two categories, proficient or advanced, and again, above the state average for those. The, again, pointing to the rigor of the new test, the top categories is exceeds expectations, and again, last year in ELA in math, we had about 65% in English and about 63% in math, scoring advanced, and you can see that under the new system, it's a little more challenging to get to that top level, so again, we exceeded the state average slightly in both English and math, and then again, the, the science test was a, was the paper-based, they're going to be switching to computer-based science test in June, but for that, we were, we were about average with the state for the number in the top category, advanced. And then our student growth percentile, typical growth is between the 40th and the 60th percentile, so both English and math fell within the range of typical growth, English on the high end of the typical growth percentile at 58, and math on the lower end at 42. That does tend to fluctuate. Last year, we had, English was, I think, at the 53rd percentile, and math was at the 61st percentile, so it varies, and so I think the, that's a good indication where the five-year averages can come in handy. Excuse me, and then our biology students, the ninth graders take the test, so we don't, we can't compare, all the results that come out with the MCAS are the grade 10 results, so as, as it happened, the ninth graders that took it last year, the results were almost identical to the 10th graders who took it two years ago, but we can't compare it to other ninth graders because the state doesn't release that information. And then some other standardized testing, the advanced placement, once again, we had, the equity in excellence percentage is the percentage of members of the senior class, the graduating class, who have scored at least three or higher on at least one exam. So we like to be around the 50% mark, if we, if we have 50% of our students taking and quote unquote, passing three or above an AP exam, you know, that's, that's where we want to be. We're a little short, so, you know, something to shoot for, but certainly we have a lot of our students taking on the challenge of AP, which, you know, as I said earlier, kind of relates to the, to the challenge index and things like that. The percentage of students who scored three to five passing, three, four, or five considered passing, we were at 76, the state average was 67, so we exceed the state average on that. The, the College Board used to provide statistics on all schools in the state, like all schools in Massachusetts, including, you know, like a BC High, some private schools and stuff, they used to give us information by state, they no longer do that, so the data we have for the states is just for the public schools, and that comes from the DESE, so this is our comparison with public schools in the state. We continue to offer, for a school our size, I think we continue to offer a good variety of AP courses, we have 11 taught here in school, and students are able to take AP also online through VHS and tech and things like that. We find, all things being equal, kids do better when they have a teacher for. a teacher for the AP class in the building. But kids do have the opportunity to, to take a course of interest. So we don't, we don't discourage it, but, you know, we, we make sure, and I think Mrs. Dunn can attest to this, we want to make sure that if you're going to take this online AP class, you have to be willing to put in the work. And, and it's, it's a greater challenge than being able to, you know, grab your teacher in the hallway. I'm really struggling with this. The, the mean score was, we're pleased with that, you know, above a three with the number of kids we had taking it. We're pleased with the mean scores. Again, above the state average. And Massachusetts as a state does, generally does very well in APs, so it's good to be on the north end of that, that comparison. SAT participation, we had, you know, nine out of our ten, nine out of ten kids take the SAT here. The composite score, and again, this is an example of getting data from the state. If you go to the state website and look up the data, they, they take the highest combined score in a single sitting. When schools look at, when colleges look at AP, excuse me, SAT scores, they'll take, if you've taken it twice, they'll take the highest from each sitting. And so for the state, our combined score is eleven oh, eleven oh five, I think that is. I can't even see. Eleven oh five, and the, the state is ten ninety-eight. A more accurate portrayal of what our kids score, what schools are looking at, is that first number, eleven thirty-four. And then, four-year and two-year colleges, we had about ninety-two percent of our kids moving on to, to schools. The, accepted to their first, second, or third choice school, that's something that's self-reported. Guidance does a survey at the end of the year where kids report that information. So eighty-eight percent of the students said they were accepted to one of their first three schools. A lot of this information, when Riley and Mark do their presentation later in the year, they'll be able to get into the more, more depth, and they have the cool graphs and things like that.
I like that. My favorite. This is my second favorite presentation. This one right here.
Well, we're in the top three. And then, just some other metrics, with school attendance, slightly above the, the state average, graduation rate above the state average, which we would expect. And then the dropout rate for last year, well, actually, it's for, the data's from seventeen eighteen, and, and we love it when we have zero. We generally don't like zeros. That's one zero we like.
So can you, can you explain that, I'm looking at these numbers, and I was waiting for you to get there. So in school year eighteen nineteen, we had a nine, just say ninety-five percent, right? Ninety-four point seven. We had ninety-five percent graduation rate. We had zero percent dropout rate. Where's the other five percent?
So what happens is there are some kids that don't graduate in four years. So if they're, you know, if they're senior, you know, if they do a double dose of tenth grade, or, what usually happens is they might be a few credits shy of moving from eighth to ninth, or ninth to tenth grade. And then, you know, they're trying to make those credits-
So this rate is graduating with the class that they started with in kindergarten.
Right. Yeah. And they also give, and if you go to the old E website, they also give an adjusted graduation rate that factors in that.
So every one of our students graduated last year.
Last year, yes, yes.
They may have not graduated at the same, at twenty nineteen, but they've graduated at some.
Right, right. And, and that's a good year. You know, there are some years where we unfortunately have had kids who, who just didn't make it despite, you know, I mean, Guidance starts working with the kids now, saying, these are the credits you need. This is what you have to do. And, and some years, they don't make it. And I would say that the handful of kids that don't make it in, in that year, the main thing you can look at is the attendance. That's, that's the thing that tends to keep kids from, from graduating on time. But we are more than happy to, to make sure kids graduate in that fifth year.
And so the ninety-six percent of student attendance, what, what does that actually translate to? What does that mean?
So it essentially means that on a given day, you know, we have ninety-five percent of our students.
Oh, okay. I see. All right. So it's a snapshot. Over the course of the year, ninety-six percent of our kids are in school every day?
On a, on a given day?
On a given-
Right. Yeah, yeah. And then there, you know, and there are other more detailed absentee is a metrics that we're looking at because when we get into the school improvement plan, one of our things we really want to work on is, is the attendance of those kids who aren't here every day. Because out of that ninety-five percent, probably three percent of those kids may not be here, you know, seven days out of ten, you know. We have some kids who are absolutely never absent. We have some kids who miss a day here and there. And then we have other kids who, you know, are classified as chronically absent. And that's something that we really want to focus and work on this year. As we were working on it last year, too, but it's an area of emphasis. And then extracurriculars, it's been pretty consistent over the years. We have about eighty-five percent of our kids involved in some kind of activity. I mean, it can be, you know, the football team, the band, or the Smash Brothers club with the computers. And then, this next report card is based off our information from the Metro West Health Survey. And this is, this looks more like a Christmas tree than, than the last one. We got green and red and a little yellow in here. And it's, these are things about student health, well-being. And it's always something that we're concerned about. Even if we're in a green area, there is, these are still things that are concerning to us. So if I just look at it by categories, student engagement and support, kids feeling like they belong, feel like they're liked, those are generally pretty good here. And I, I would say that, you know, the, I have an adult I can talk to at school. Eighty-seven percent of the kids reported on the twenty-eighteen Metro West Health Survey, that they felt they had some adult at school they could talk to. And I think that's, that's something that's very positive. We want that to be a hundred percent, but eighty-seven is, is pretty positive. And we feel like things we've done with advisory and, and things that staff have done to, you know, form relationships with kids have been very helpful in that. And then fitness and nutrition and exercise and things like that. We're around the surrounding communities, Metro West. Obviously, we'd like to see more of our kids exercising and, you know, we certainly want to see that, but it's pretty much in line with, with the area communities. And then we get to student risk behaviors, and, you know, these are things that scare us all as parents, as people who work with kids. And we're looking at, as a school and as a community, looking at programming to address a lot of these things. So, you know, if you, if you look at the current use of alcohol, according to the survey in twenty-eighteen, our kids are above the average in Metro West. Cigarettes, certainly e-cigarettes. I think, I, I think Millis might have been ahead of the curve on this one because I think there's, you know, those numbers actually look low to me. Because vaping continues to be an issue, and we're doing things to address it. And we're, in December, we're having a student assembly with some programming on, on vaping. And another thing we'd like to do is get more information out to parents. One of the things we did a couple of years ago is we had an organization come in, and they set up on stage a teenager's room. And we're, different things that might look, you know, might look perfectly fine in a teenager's room, but on closer inspection, it's something that's not good for the kid. So we, we're looking to have more programs like that, you know. And I think more and more, as, as parents and as a community, we're certainly hearing more about the dangers of vaping in the news. And, you know, I hope that our kids are hearing a lot of this, too. Certainly, we've been talking about it for a number of years with them, but sometimes when they start seeing the images on TV and hearing some of the horror stories, hopefully, it starts to sink in. Marijuana, yeah.
Good question. So in the last month or a couple of months with, with the governor's ban, have you anecdotally or seen any kind of reduction or heard any kind of harder-to-get access?
I, I, honestly, I haven't. I don't know if Riley has heard anything as, from a counseling perspective. I will say that I don't see the pods, the little pods that they use. I don't see them as much as I did last year and the year before. I don't know if that's a function of kids not doing it, or kids just being better at, you know, hiding them or whatever. It's, it's very, it's very challenging to, to catch kids in the act because they, the, the things are designed to be discreet and, and, you know, but, but we're, we're working on it. And when we do catch kids doing it, there are school consequences. If they're playing a sport, there are athletic consequences. And I have a number of expensive vaping devices in my office that have been confiscated. But I, I'm hopeful that-
Under lock and key.
Yes, under lock and key. I'm hopeful that, you know, we're starting to realize that these things are not good for kids, no matter how nice they smell. And I'm hoping the kids are starting to realize that, too. Marijuana, use, slightly above Metro West. I thought, I think it'll be interesting when the kids take the survey again next October to see what the impact of the legalization has on the kids' perception and use of marijuana. Because I kind of feel that that number will be going up. Again, that's something that as a school and as a community, we want to address. And we just had a meeting last week with a program from Mass General Hospital that we're going to try and move forward and partner with them to, to get data on marijuana use and then also have access to some of Mass General's resources to, to prevent marijuana use. So that's something that we're excited about that, you know, hopefully we'll address this problem. And then, student mental health, certainly, again, a big impetus for our SEL, social emotional learning initiatives in the district and at the school. And again, I think you can see we're kind of in line with, with what's happening throughout Metro West. But again, whether it's green or yellow, the numbers are concerning, you know. And look at the number of considered suicide, and, and the number's at fifteen percent. You know, that's fifteen out of a hundred kids. You know, if, if we have four hundred kids, and then we're just shy of four hundred kids, you know, that's sixty kids. So, so the numbers are concerning. And again, we've, we're addressing it as a school. In September, we had a presenter from Minding Your Mind come and do a staff training for all the middle and high school staff on warning signs for at-risk behavior. But even more importantly, being, being open to, you know, when, when a kid comes to someone with a problem, you know, asking the type of questions that, that can lead the kid to help. So those, you know, certainly, mental health is, is a big initiative for our school and our district. And then bullying, again, kind of Metro West, we're kind of in line with, with Metro West. And, you know, we, we try our best to teach our kids not to be bystanders. Teach our kids to alert people when they see bullying happening, even if it's not happening to them. Certainly, if it's happening to them, you know, and this is where we hope that relationship with a trusted adult in school can pay some dividends as well. So that kids who are feeling bullied or who witnessed bullying will feel comfortable going to an adult in the school, and then we can address it. So that's just a snapshot of the, you know, some of the data we got back from, from Metro West. And on that note, we'll kind of look at some of the things we're looking at for this year, the school improvement plan. And again, it's aligned with the district's improvement plan. And so our goals are similar to the goals in that district improvement plan. So our first goal is supporting personalized learning as a means to achieve student learning and growth. And this is nothing new in Millis. For as long as Nancy's been superintendent, we've felt that one of the things we can do best as a small school, small school system, is personalized learning. And I would, I would say that, you know, as a district, we're on the cutting edge of this. I was at a meeting this morning in Hudson, and someone at the, the state level found out I was from Millis and said, it's pretty amazing what you people are doing in Millis with personalized learning. And so that was good to hear unsolicited. And so, this first goal, some of the important things we're doing to, you know, support, to achieve student learning and growth, the first thing is we're looking to align our math curriculum with state standards, really looking at the new state standards that, in math, that, that came out last year, and making sure our curriculum is aligned with that. With Joan Lynn, the Director of Curriculum, has, has us working with a consultant who's helping our teachers align their courses so that we're not, you know, we're adjusting any gaps or any duplications so that our students will, will perform well on those MCAS tests, on SATs and things like that. It's not like they're doing poorly now. I mean, we're, we're above the state average, but again, we think we can do better than that. We're looking at the scope and sequence for Spanish. With the goal of personalized learning in mind, we have, through the Highlander Institute, we're involved with the FUSE Fellowship Program. And in the high school, Mark Carfield is a FUSE Fellow this year. And essentially, what a FUSE Fellow does is, it's a classroom teacher who is, is adept at personalization, but is looking to grow in personalization. And so Mark will go out to other schools and observe other teachers with, with a focus on personalized learning and blended learning, and work with that person and discuss with that person different strategies and practices and things, and be able to bring that back to his- and be able to bring that back to his practice. We actually have a couple of FUSE Fellows visiting us tomorrow. One in the high school, one in the middle school. So they'll be shadowing some students in the morning and then meeting with FUSE Fellows. And our pilot teacher classrooms and the pilot teachers are the teachers who are opening up their classrooms for these fellows to come in and observe and discuss. And I think that exchange of information and ideas is very powerful for improving student learning and growth. At the high school, we want to continue to look at standard-based assessment, making sure our assessments are aligned with the standards for the course. And so, for example, as we look at the math curriculum, we're looking very closely at the standards which, which the state has assigned to different courses and so forth. So we want to make sure that our assessments link right back to those standards. And we're really assessing the kids on what, what the curriculum is, is, has, has deemed to be important. We also, in supporting personalized learning, we also want to support the new engineering class, which just started this year with a generous grant from Merit. And it's, it's exciting to see. I've been able to go into the class a few times. They, they just finished up working on designing pinhole cameras. And the project itself was to, to make a camera, but, you know, using ordinary, you know, using cardboard boxes and coffee tins and things like this. But it's also, as part of the design problem, is something that would be able to be used by someone with a physical handicap who couldn't use their hands. So they actually have to make these cameras. I mean, they use like glad, hefty bag boxes and all this difference. And they're all different. They've all approached a different way. But in, in the design, they have to use oven mitts to, to see if they work. And so they, you know, they toss these different design challenges. So that's a great, I think that's going to be a great addition to our course catalog for the kids, but also for the teachers to, to look at a different way of engaging kids. As, as a school, we want to move forward from compliance to engagement to empowerment. And what, what I mean by that is, when I started teaching, if the principal came into my classroom and I was at the front of the class talking away and the kids were looking at me, they said that was engagement. Well, that's not engagement, that's compliance. They're not, you know, they're not throwing a raises at me, but they're not engaged. And so then we get to engagement where, okay, paying attention, taking some notes. You know, they're doing what you're asking them to do, but they're not connecting with it. So engagement is when the kid gets connected. And then empowerment is when the connection is there and the kid is ready to take it to another level. It means something to the student. And I think a big part of the movement from engagement to empowerment is having the student goal setting and the self-assessment. What do, what, what are my goals for this particular class, for this particular unit? And how, how am I progressing? Am I progressing to the degree that I, I'm capable of and I want to? So that's something that as a staff, we, we had a professional development day in October and we have one coming up in December where teachers are working on, we're calling them passion projects, where they're really focusing on designing units and lessons that empower, that they feel will empower kids. We want to support real-world learning experiences. You know, we have, particularly in, in some of the science classes, we have, Mrs. Cheney has made a connection with the Amgen Corporation. And so they bring in their state-of-the-art laboratory equipment into our biology classes, our A and P classes. And kids are doing state-of-the-art experiments with state-of-the-art equipment. And so that's, you know, it gives the kids a real sense of what it means to work in a laboratory. And we're looking at those things from, you know, every discipline, not just science. Mrs. Dunn mentioned the Oral History Project with the veterans, where kids are interviewing veterans and, and, you know, kind of chronicling the, where they were, what they did, how they felt and, you know, taking on the role of a historian. Those types of experiences, we want to continue to, to explore and expand. And our global scholars and STEAM Scholars Programs are in line with that. These are opportunities for kids who, who have that passion for either the humanities or for science, technology, engineering, arts and math, to really delve into beyond the school day. And part of the program in the STEAM Scholars, and we just have our first cohort of STEAM Scholars go into a program. Now, part of their program is to do an externship, to shadow someone for a day. And we've already had a couple of kids in the STEAM Program go out and shadow kids and they're going to prevent, present to the group. So the more we can get our kids outside the walls of, of our school and into the community and into different areas with real-world experience, we want to do that. Second goal, maximize the use of our resources for improvement in student learning and well-being. Again, we want to connect with kids. We've, as a district and as a school, we've done a lot with learner profiles, learning about the variability of our kids and their particular interests and strengths, weaknesses, challenges, et cetera. We want to continue to learn those to, to connect more with our kids. We want to expand our social emotional learning programming. I talked a little bit about it when we went through the, the Metro West Health Report. And a great new addition this year is our Bridge Program, which you all were, were good enough to support. And it's a way we really believe we're going to be able to help kids who may have mental or physical health challenges that are keeping them from school. This is a way to reach those kids and get them in school and get them engaged. We want to expand our tiered instruction, both in social, emotionally and academically, so that, so the kids are getting the supports they need, whether it's in the classroom or outside of the classroom or a more specialized program within the, within the confines of the school. And again, we want to address student absentees and particularly looking at those students who are chronically absent. And the state defines chronically absent as, as 10%. So, I mean, we have kids that miss, that's 18 days of school. We have kids who miss 18 days of school, too many of them. We'd like to form effective partnerships with families. And we really, you know, want to be before the united front. So we want to do the best we can to communicate with parents and families. And we, we're kind of expanding our social media footprint with Facebook and Instagram and newsletters. I have a senior, Zach Clark, is my social media coordinator. So his work study is to, is to get the word out there on Instagram and Facebook. And he's an expert at Instagram. Facebook is kind of old-fashioned. So, but he's, he's doing a great job and it's, you know, it's, it's a good way to get information out there. Certainly, his work with Instagram has gotten the word out to kids on a number of things. And kids are starting to send him information that he can post. And certainly, the more communication we can get out there, the better.
What's your handle?
@MilisHS. So, check it out. Parent and family academic events. I don't know if, yeah, so we have, you know, Junior Parent College Night and Financial Aid Night and a number of those programs that, that Guidance runs. We want to continue that to help our families with, with those matters at school. And then also some SEL events, including, you know, things we talked about like vaping and dealing with some of these issues brought out in the, in the at-risk behavior survey. And then also with the social emotional help for the, the speaker we had in September for the staff, we're trying to coordinate with him to do a parent evening because he was phenomenal. And then we want to make sure that this culture that emphasized personalized learning to analysis, interpretation, implementation of best practices. We want to make sure we're doing the best we can to make sure we're current with best practices and techniques. And so as a principal, I want to utilize my staff meetings and professional learning time in valuable ways that are going to really impact what's done in the classroom and how teachers teach. We want to create a climate of respect among the staff, among the kids, among the community. We want to make sure that our high-needs populations, kids in special ed, kids in ELL, other students who need supports in different areas are getting the support they need. We want, we want to promote our teachers' learning outside the district and expand their opportunities for teacher leadership. One of the unique things about our school, where it's so small, we need teacher leaders. And I think, you know, in a district as small as ours, where we have, you know, five English teachers in the high school, you can't hide as a teacher. You know, there's, there's no one, there's no one who just punches the clock. I mean, they're fully committed. And we want to make sure that, that those teachers can use their expertise to help the entire staff, help the entire school. And so those are the main focuses of the School Improvement Plan.
Thanks, Bob. Here's the first question. What, what are some key things, whether it's program-focused or resource-focused in terms of social, emotional? What are the things that we should be prioritizing or focusing on from a financial resource perspective?
First, well, I think for social, emotional, you know, I think if we look at those numbers for, for, you know, kids who are stressed, who are depressed, who have anxiety, who have considered suicide, to me, that's, that's an area that needs attention right away. I mean, we're providing, you know, we're, we're paying attention to it, but we have to do more. Because even though we're in line with the Metro West stats, the numbers are still alarming. And I think more and more, we have students who have anxiety and depression and school avoidance. And so I think a huge thing we've done is the Bridge Program. And I think to continue to, to focus on that, for a lot of the kids, being here is the best place for them. And a lot of times, if, if some social, emotional issues keep them away from here, if they're not in a program, if they're just at home and can't get out of bed, you know, that's, that's not good. We need to get them in here. And so I think whatever we can do to support those kids, to get them in our building. And, you know, for some kids, they need more than just being here, certainly. But for most kids, once they get in here, I think that's, that's a big first step.
As we've been kind of going through with both, both in the risk behavior part, but then with this Bridge Program, I've almost been wondering, maybe, be, I'd like to have, I mean, you know, obviously, it's the first year of the Bridge Program. So towards the end of this year, maybe between the Bridge Program and Guidance, come to us with, obviously, not names, not content. But here are some of the things that are, are going on that, as a community, and this isn't just a school thing, this is a, as a community thing. What, you know, is it, you know, there's not enough to do on a Friday, Saturday night that doesn't require driving or getting a ride half hour to get to somewhere that's open because there's literally nothing to do on 109. You know, so does that become, find ways to get, you know, whether it's gym here, town hall gym, some, some type of place where you can provide? I know just in the last probably year, I think people are trying to run the CYO more for middle school kids, but they've done some nights at the hall where they're just trying to, they basically just open it up and just, but that's focused kind of on the, the middle school kids, just give them something to do for a couple hours. Obviously, that's not all of it and we could have everything open every night and then kids are going to go somewhere else and do whatever they want to do anyway. But just something that says, something to give us an idea of what, you know, we can, what those additional resources should be focused on or what are kind of those core crux issues that, that we're facing as a, as a community that's doable or something.
What happened, did, we were looking for funding for a social worker to be done by the town and the school.
Yeah.
And I believe we got partial funding? No?
We wrote a grant, but it didn't get funded and-
Oh, I thought, I thought there was a point where we had some funding for some hours.
But both Chief Safiya and Chief Barrett and I are in agreement that that is probably the most powerful thing that can happen currently to support the families. Like Bob said, we get them here, we, we work really well. The staff works really well with kids. But there are family issues that are beyond our scope that, and Chief Barrett had, had linked up with somebody, and I'm forgetting the details of the program, but if there are resources that come into the fiscal, this current fiscal year or certainly for next year, that, that is a priority, to have a social worker for the town.
Well, we should have a, we should try to make it a priority for ourselves and then see what happens.
If I could expedite that from like a late spring to a January timeframe, and obviously you will only have a small period, but you guys probably know a lot of it already. And if it entails, you know, pulling the data together from Chief Barrett, Chief Safiya, something that will allow us to make the case and bring the case forward as we go through the budget process, not just the school budget, but the town budget process going into next year, that would be very helpful for us to be able to then in turn advocate for a collective town resource focused on this. Because I, I do think it's, it's important and it's, and it's not a school problem and it's not a police problem and it's not a fire and rescue problem. It's all of our problems.
Yeah. And I'd also say, Mike, you mentioned, you know, kids doing things after school and at night and things. I also think that, you know, some of our facilities could definitely use upgrading. You know, I'm so happy to see the basketball court come back and see kids back over there. I think, you know, a lot of our, I know our fields are always crowded and, you know, there just doesn't seem to be enough room. I think that's something also that would be something, again, as a community to address.
Sure.
I really do.
Excellent work as always.
Thank you all.
Thanks, Bob.
Thanks, Bob.
Thanks, Bob.
We can then move down Superintendent's report. We did the awards, so just an update. I saw an email that the radon testing was done. I think we're supposed- I think we're supposed to get results back tomorrow.
Correct. And, and Mr. Chair, we will have a meeting Thursday morning of the construction group to discuss those results and discuss further what response would be appropriate.
If that, if the results memo doesn't include the whole committee tomorrow, can you just read that?
Certainly.
All right. Under the chairman's report, first thing I'll, I'll note is that Heidi Perkins, who's been our tri-county school committee representative, has resigned from that position, so we are now void of a tri-county representative. So if anybody here or on camera, out in the public knows of anybody or would be interested, uh, you can email, uh, you can email the superintendent or the town administrator. That is a position that is ultimately appointed by the chair of the school committee, the chair of the board of selectmen, the select board, and the moderator. So, um, then next we had in our packet, we've got some information on the facility rental information that we've had. So there's a listing, I'm pulling it up because my Chromebook lost juice.
Oh, I have the copy.
That's okay. Um, that's, uh, that's okay. I'd see. So in, so we've got the FY18 facility rental and FY19 and it lists all of the groups we've had utilize our facility and then over three quarters of the way over to the right, the waiver amount, and then what the fee would have been and what the fee was after the fact. So in fiscal 18, total potential fees were $37,206. We waived 22,000 of it and so we brought in 14,804. And then last year fiscal 19, we had a potential fees of 43,357 and we waived 26,838, so we brought in 16,519. Um, if you scan through the waiver percentage, um, it goes from zero to 100 and, uh, the zeros are usually people who didn't come for a waiver, um, or they're adult groups. And, uh, there's a couple of 50 percent and then a, the majority of them are 100 percent waived. Um, again, there's kind of no real designation as I look through it. Pretty much the, the zeros are, are people who just never asked for one. It's not anything more than that. So, but again, we've, you know, people that have asked, we have granted at least half and if not, um, more. The various groups, just from a dollar perspective, you know, last year, Millis Theater was $13,000 waived. Um, and then our other large ones are, are basketball utilization, so Metro West, we waived roughly 5,000, another 1,500 for basketball camp, extended day, but $1,600. So this is, this is the information we want to look at for, so.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
Just a question on the contracts that are on the back, one was the Millis Theater Group. It looks like it was signed, well, it does, it's not signed, but it looks like it was created back in, was it 2007?
I think it, it was signed, I just didn't have the signed copies.
So is it signed every year or was it signed in 2007?
It, it just carries forward every year.
Does it state that?
We, uh, no, it just, that's how we've operated. That it was an agreement that was reached and continues.
But does that, but do we, I guess I can read it.
Well, it says right here.
It just says termination, so it's valid until either party terminates.
Okay.
But nothing about renewal or anything like that.
Renewal or is it?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So it's the same thing with the, it looks like the DI uses the same template?
Yeah.
Is this something, is this our legal template that we've used in the past or?
This, this predates my superintendency. And, um, so I can check, I would imagine that he conferred with, um, council, but I, I don't know for...
I mean, we just, we might want to think about refreshing it if it's, last time it was looked at was 2007.
And put a timeframe in. I know there's a, I know there's a termination clause, but maybe we go for a year or two or three and then we say we come back.
And then come back and reevaluate.
Right.
Well, because I can also say in 10 years, I've never seen either one of these or, or reviewed them or had a discussion about doing so. I mean, they've just, for at least not long.
Good idea to...
Yeah, to at least have them on and say, yeah, we should, think somebody should look at them and think that, decide whether they're still a good idea or not.
Mr. Chair, I'm wondering if, if you want to refer this to a subcommittee to, to look at those and to look at the fee and to, um, as, as the committee has talked about some sort of standardizing our approach to it or how you'd like to proceed.
To an extent, I'll open it up. I mean, truthfully, would, based on this, we basically waive the fees for almost everybody.
Correct. And the percentage varies depending on who would, you know, who comes in or the type of event or what they ask for.
Yep.
But I mean, the, just on numbers, the vast majority of them are 100 percent waived.
They are.
So...
We were definitely in a waiving mood in FY18. We slowed down a little in 19.
I think some of that's too is who came, like, the Millis, like on 18, there was, some of it's broken out, so like the Millis Lions cafeteria and kitchen is broken out. There's...
Yeah, some of it, some of it, it could be combined to...
Right.
Isn't all just considered, doesn't include, um, just...
That's fine.
Have we seen any increase in, um, requests for space now with the new Clyde Brown? Are people requesting to use the cafeteria or?
Like I've had people ask to rent the gym, but the gym is pretty booked and we won't go, so I would just have someone ask and we wouldn't have space. Had somebody want to rent the U of T or anything, we'd do the cycles, but we didn't have enough space, we were 600 people, so that did work. We were 2,000, five, it was $5,000. It was a lot of money to rent that.
But there will, I, I can envision there being requests for use of the cafeteria at Clyde Brown because of the access. But at the same time, that request is going to come, especially if it's from Millis groups, that that is going to be in heavy demand for a zero fee.
That was kind of one of our selling points.
Right, that was part of the deal.
Kind of, if we're going to stay true to our...
Right, so...
That we have to find a, we have to find a balance of building up a little something so when we have a boiler break or a boil, you know, or a hot water heater break, but yeah, that was one of the, they're already paying for it to a certain degree. We all are.
That's why I think we need to come into an agreement of what, what we're going to charge or what the fee should be or, I, I just don't think it's, it's not entirely fair if we, if everyone that walks to the door and asks for a waiver, we give it to them, or what about, you know, what if, what if there's a group that doesn't know that they have that option?
Sure.
And they're paying full price. It's, it's going to, it's a tough balance, but...
Yes, I understand.
I think there's some things on here though, if we take a look at it, that are fairly obvious that we wouldn't want a discount. Like anybody that's making a profit, like, well, outside of like basketball camp and things, but like TDA as an example.
Sure.
So businesses.
Yeah.
Businesses, so I'm trying to bucket things, right? So businesses for me are like exempt from any sort of discount, so pay 100 percent all the time, even if they come and ask. If you're a business and you want to use the space, you're paying full boat. Um, and then kind of student impacting groups.
Correct.
And then not-for-profit, right? Like Buddy Bowl, charitable, charitable events, the Girl Scouts. I was just trying to figure out how we can get to buckets of people.
Yeah.
So we can, and then maybe there's some sort of...
Everybody else?
Yeah.
I don't know what that everybody, I think that's pretty much, I mean...
What is, what is Scott Winch? Is that a person?
He's a guy who comes in and does lessons for our students.
Music lessons. Yeah, he's the music teacher.
Does he charge money?
Yeah, I think so.
Yes.
Yes.
But, I mean, you can't pay for the Metro West basketball.
These are our students.
They're charged for that.
Right, right.
Private lessons.
What is passport to retirement?
That was just somewhere on a person who came in and did the financial point, that happened during the conference.
I remember them.
So I mean, I mean, really, the, the three buckets are we have, we have one adult social group, the men's group.
Yeah.
Playing basketball. We have TDA and then we have either not, the rest of them are basically nonprofits or Millis direct impact predominantly students.
Yeah.
So there's not really, we're not talking big numbers in...
Yeah, in the non-student impacting groups.
Right.
But I think that you can see that most of the, I mean, most of the student groups or, or not-for-profits do get 100 percent discount or at least a 50 percent discount.
Yeah. So then it was...
It's the odd chance that they didn't come in and ask for one.
Normalize that to make a policy.
I don't, I don't know.
So I picked the easy one, right? Like the low hanging fruit is if you're a business, you don't get, you're not, you're not eligible for any discount.
Right, so, so it's either, based on what we have, it's, if you look at the, I mean, really the only one that, of the kind of four categories, just the only one with differentiation is the Millis impact groups because they're the only ones who have paid anything. So extended day got a 53 percent waiver in 18 and Metro West got a 50 percent waiver in 19, same thing. Extended day got 53 percent, Metro West got 50 percent for a portion of the year and AAU basketball got 50 percent. But then Millis youth baseball softball didn't get any, but they never came and asked. So it's kind of, if, if we're going to set a rule, it really comes down to the rule of what do we do for Millis impact? And it's either 0.50 or...
Some of these are getting waivers, I don't remember them coming to us, so I think we also have to normalize the waiver process. We've never had the Girl Scouts come before us, we've never had, that I know of, extended day, so...
The Lions Club.
The Lions Club. And I'm not saying that's going to change, we're going to change our decision, but we, if we're going, if, if we're making some groups come before us, everyone.
And ask.
Yeah.
Yep.
Everyone, and they don't necessarily have to come before us, they can present something, a memo, and we can review them.
Or just a form.
Just a form, yeah, yeah, right, right.
And if we need them to come, we can say, we want to talk to them.
Is there some sort of standing agreement with some, with the Girl Scouts or some of these groups that we know that they get, that you've just always, it's just sort of been normal practice?
That's always been the way we've operated. There is, unlike the destination imagination in the Millis Theater Group, there is not a formalized written contract, but they, yes, ever, you know, for my 12 years and prior to that, they just have not paid. It's been a...
Mr. Chair, I, I think we need to...
Subcommittee?
We need a subcommittee to, one, come up with the form, come up with procedures. And so we're going to have to push reset at some point and start fresh. And, once again, just because we're bringing the Millis Theater Group in or DI doesn't mean we're going to charge them, but we gotta, we gotta normalize this because it's all kind of...
It's all over the place right now.
All over the place.
We're going to be like a tiered system, like businesses, this is what it costs for.
I agree with, I agree with Ms. Gibbons that a business who's making money, we don't have that many pays full ride.
Also, I think it might be an opportunity to try to gather, um, some data from surrounding districts and see what they're charging. I forgot when the last time we looked at the fee schedule was, but I believe it's probably more than four or five years ago.
Knows the fee schedule?
Yes. Do you know when that was updated?
It's just 2019.
Yeah, that sounds right.
Mr. Chair, I happily volunteer myself to be on this committee.
It's your issue.
What did you say?
It's your issue, yes, of course. Really stepping up there, Ms. Rhode.
I do what I can.
Would anybody like to join Carrie?
Don't all raise your hands.
All right. So Carrie and Robin can...
Fix this by January 1st?
I think Carrie would like to say something.
No, actually, I would, given the fact that it's going to be a subcommittee, I'd be happy to consult with the subcommittee.
Perfect. All right. You guys can let us know when you, when you are ready. We don't need to put a date on it because it's not...
If you need a meeting room...
Empty bottle.
If you need a meeting room, I'm going to waive, we're going to waive the fee for the first three meetings, you have three meetings and then there's an escalating...
I might know somebody. I'll come in and ask for a waiver.
Let's talk after. Denied. Be the first one, we deny.
Okay, we're going to drink water now.
So you're right on the money, Jody.
Right. Okay.
All right.
And Mr. Chair, I'd like to thank Jody for doing a great job pulling this data together.
Thank you, Jody.
We will need a way.
All right. Uh, next, the other thing in our packets is a draft purchasing procedures policy, longer than the policies we've normally written, but it, it gets into kind of all the outline. Terry actually drafted this a while ago. Um, so Terry, if you want to come up...
It was about a year ago.
Yeah. So...
And, and it has not been reviewed by council yet, so that, that would be one of the typical steps we would take.
I would say that it is pretty much in line with 30B.
So if you want to just give us the highlights, read through the whole thing, but just kind of the highlights of the key components of the processes and where they would fall.
I think some of the key components are really at the start of the process, we're really talking about sort of there are, um, different ways we might go about purchasing to be efficient. So we might do it through collaborative purchasing with the town or with county or with other groups, um, maybe working with other school districts. Again, that's relatively new under Massachusetts law. And there are some national collaboratives as well. It does have a section here that talks about purchasing locally, but it puts some constraints on purchasing locally because you can get caught up in purchasing locally and it can cost you more. So it does give you some measure of constraint on that. I think one of the things that it talks about here is that, um, basically once you, there are thresholds, and I think that's really probably the biggest key here, is we try, and one of the reasons, by the way, it's a lengthy policy and, and there still would be procedures, but purchasing is probably one of the most important things we do to control your budget. And so having a very defined... things we do to control your budget. And so having a very defined purchasing policy, and again, I've been doing this 20 years plus, is very, very helpful in frankly enforcing purchasing, you know, in the district. And we have a great staff here and they, they work very well at this. But nonetheless, this is really good to have nice and clear and understand this is what the committee wants. Okay? Because the committee has voted to establish these rules. So the first threshold is $5,000. Okay? Once we go beyond five, under $5,000, we're hoping we're making a best decision. But $5,000 to $10,000, a couple of things happen. First, if it's over $5,000, we want you to start maybe thinking about getting three quotes anyways. It's not a required thing. We want you to start thinking about it. The other thing is anything over $5,000 comes to this group if it's, if it's a sole purchase. And when we talk about a sole purchase, what we're trying to isolate is that we purchased way more than $5,000 from, for example, WB Mason. Okay? We're not bringing that to you. Okay? However, if we were going to buy more than $5,000 at one time of one item from WB Mason, for example, it's last spring, we were talking about buying paper, like $8,000 worth of paper, we would bring that to you. Okay? Then there is the $10,000 of $49999 level. Again, now we start to get into some things that are making our purchasing policy match up with Chapter 30B. Okay? You must have three quotes. They must be in writing. That is a requirement under the law. You have no choice. Okay? And this is again, something we're, we're educating our folks and teaching our folks about. Now the exception to that would be if somebody has, and I think I talked about this earlier in the process, if somebody has a state contract or we're also a member of MECC and Massachusetts Higher Education Consortium, either one of those that qualifies as for 30B is you don't need to get three bids in that situation. If it's over $50,000, have to do an RFP or an invitation to bid. There is no choice in the matter. You can do an RFI to get information to develop an RFP or a bid, but the RFI does not replace that. It's more a way of getting information. And then it goes into some of the technical aspects of those bids, that you can waive, you can waive formalities, you can do different things that are basically in the best interest of the district, you can reject bids, that sort of thing. So that's kind of the purchasing policy in a nutshell. I would say it's pretty, and again, it's some of the highlights of Chapter 30B without obviously reciting everything from Chapter 30B. There would be procedures that would be a little bit more detailed than this, but this covers, I think, certainly the things that I think are important to be in a policy. And yes, it is longer than lots of policies you're used to.
Mr. Chair, so I, oh, I'm sorry.
So I read through it all from a process, I think, all the thresholds hold. The only question I had was on the competitive price aspect on the local. I guess my question is why even, why even put a threshold on, do we need it?
You don't need it.
And the, and the reason I say that is because I appreciate the effort to, to say we'll try and go local, but I'm not sure I really am even worried about committing to paying locally if it's 1%. Like, I would prefer we just buy the, make a best effort at buying local, but I err on, as long as it's the same quality product, buying the least expensive. And if it means we buy from California instead of Boston, then so be it. I guess that's the part that I, just even putting.
There's no, there's no real requirement for it. I will tell you, I started putting that in policies back in New Hampshire because New Hampshire, for a brief period of time, passed a ill-conceived law where you had to require, you were required to purchase locally if possible. And what happened for a period of time is, is local vendors figured that out and figured out real fast that they could charge a great deal more than non-local vendors. And so I started putting it in policies to give some kind of cap. And quite frankly, it was illegal at the time, given what the state law did, but the state law caught up with me fortunately sooner or later. And so now the, again, in New Hampshire, it's a little bit more normal. You still have to buy locally if possible, but again, the law has caught up to it and basically if it's not within a certain parameter, you can go outside of that. In Massachusetts, you have no obligation to buy locally. In fact, the only obligation other than the dollar parameters that you have as far as buying is you have an obligation to buy American for the food service program if it's over $3,000. That's a federal requirement.
Yeah, I mean, it just, I would leave the first sentence in there, but I'd take out the competitive prices defined.
That's fine. It's not a.
And then, or even, I mean, I like the first.
You could take the sole section out if you wanted to.
I mean, you could. I don't mind the first sentence by just to throw, to say, we'll try, but because I think that's.
I mean, typically, typically we.
It's a nice thing to say, but I also don't care if it comes out either.
I mean, typically, we do try. Usually in a small town, there's not a whole lot of local vendors that we deal with other than sometimes with the food service. Again, we will deal with local farmers for produce, that sort of thing. There are local service providers that sometimes we are able to use. Sometimes there are local, you know, tradesmen that we can use. But there's really not a whole lot of products that we usually can find locally.
I think the intent, local can mean Massachusetts. And I think the intent often is to avoid environmental costs.
Yeah.
Because you want to avoid the carbon footprint associated with transportation.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, Mark. Mr. Chair, Terry, this is very comprehensive. So my only, and I've looked at it quick, you would know better, but I'm okay with you having a hundred-page procedure. But is there stuff in here that, so if we do formalize this policy, that we don't want to have to be coming back to update it? Meaning, for instance, and I've looked at it close, you would know better, but all, all competitive purchasing must be submitted in sealed envelopes. Now, that may be tied to the law, but who knows in three years from now, is it an online submission through a website? So I'm just saying, well, before we bring this to council, why don't you look one last time to see are the things that we could put in the procedures, which we've done with other, I think the bullying was an example.
Yeah.
The procedures are a lot longer than the policy. And we said that we would follow the, the Millis Public Schools bullying response guidelines or whatever it was, which then can be changed fairly easy without the vote of this committee.
The one, the one thing in here that would be, that would change potentially, because it has changed every, it had changed every seven or so years. And it has just recently changed. So I do not anticipate a change in the foreseeable future. Are the requirements for bidding and quotation, in other words, the $10,000 threshold to $4999 and then the 50 and more.
If we're going seven years, that's fine. That's, I'm just thinking, is something going to change next year?
No.
And so have you, did you look at model policies?
Sealed envelopes, that's been a requirement forever.
Did you look at model policies around this?
Yeah, well, again, I'm, I'm MCPPO certified.
Okay.
So this is, this is part of what we learn when we take that course.
But I think we do need to bring it through legal counsel.
So I would have to have, when we do request RFPs, we always do them electronically. We don't require anyone to give us sealed envelopes anymore. So I don't know if it's, I mean, do we, is that still a thing in the schools? A sealed envelope with paper?
It is, here's, here's what the law requires, here's what, and why we still say sealed envelopes, is what federal, what the state law requires for schools or for public entities, municipalities as well. You can use electronic submissions if you have an encrypted site. We don't have an encrypted site. So when and if we can get an encrypted way of receiving them electronically.
Sure.
We could then modify the policy to reflect that. But because we can't obey the state law currently with electronic submissions, that's why we have to have sealed envelopes.
But does it hurt for us to put that in our policy now?
If we put it in our policy, we would run the risk of a bid challenge. Because if I didn't accept an electronic bid, so I'm aware of saying I'm being caught between a rock and a hard place. I can't accept the electronic bid because I don't have an encrypted site, but in my policy, it says we'll accept electronic bids. That's why it's not in there now.
Okay.
And I wasn't suggesting removing anything. I was just saying, just let's make sure
You don't want it to be so constrictive.
we're. It's an evergreen policy.
Right, right.
And, and.
Is there something we can loosen up a little so we don't have to modify the policy of every little change?
And I would, I would tell you when and if we get to the point of where we have, are able to receive encrypted, encrypted email attachments and transmissions, it's a one-sentence ad, really. I mean, it's not a big, it's not going to be a big lift. And, and we wouldn't even necessarily need to add it right away because state law would empower me.
Sure.
To be able to accept that electronic bid, even though your policy per se still would say only sealed bids.
Got it.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
So we need to come up with a policy number. We don't need to vote to send this to legal counsel because it's not even, it's prior to first reading.
I would say, yeah, right. What we would want to do is.
Give it a number.
We, right. And we don't even need to do a number right now. We need to do it.
That's right.
Right? We have legal counsel look at this. And once they've done a review of it, we take their version, any red line version back from it. And that can be our first reading.
Yep. Yeah.
I just think in general, it's, I think this is something in the next year or so or just even going forward multiple years. It'll be helpful if we start utilizing the policy book a little bit more than we have, just because time changes and decisions are made and protocols or, or not policies, but protocols and procedures are, are put in place or stated. And they may sit in minutes of meetings, but they don't.
Right.
We don't have anything. And so there can be times, and there have been times and instances where, you know, communication and things that, that this committee has thought kind of we established as protocol got lost in translation due to change in staff or time in and of itself, just.
Well, look what we said earlier, that all fee waivers.
Right.
Now have to, we have to have a, that was something that's just been going on and on and on, right?
It just was the way.
So I agree with you. My only thought would be, in the meantime, prior to formalizing this, we all just are in agreement that any purchase for goods or services over a single point of good or service over five grand will come to this committee.
Right.
For approval.
And, and quite honestly, unless there's some objection here, this is our operating procedure right now.
Yes.
With or without a policy adoption.
No, no objection here.
All right.
Thank you, Terry.
Thank you.
Subcommittee report, elementary school building committee?
I don't know. You can take this one, Nancy. I don't have any, I don't have anything.
Nothing to report?
No. Absolutely.
If you've been watching the old Clyde Brown become a parking lot.
Oh, yeah.
We really need to commend the contractor doing some fantastic catch-up work to make sure that that will be able to be paved before the, the paving companies, you know, shut down and we would not be able to get material. They have done a phenomenal job of, you know, putting down all the pipe and leveling that. And I mean, it's just been a phenomenal job. So I think for, given all the problems that we had with delays in getting the old Clyde Brown taken down, the catch-up that they've done is absolutely remarkable. So that's the one thing I would.
Yeah. And though maybe one, you made me think of something, traffic pattern wise, because they are on target to meet the deadline for the first coat of that over there, there will be some impact to traffic pattern. We talked about it briefly at the last school building committee meeting. And I think the initial thought was the pattern will change after holiday break.
Yeah.
So we'll have more details on that in the next month or so.
And I think there may be one day.
Yeah.
Or two where we have to resort to a different traffic pattern, but that's to be determined depending.
And that will be, that will probably be later in the spring when they do the final.
Oh, the final, that was right.
That, when they have to do the final, that's, that's when that will happen.
Just some logistical things to go.
Thank you, Terry.
We don't have any correspondence. School committee announcements? Anybody? All right. No old and new business. We will go to executive session for consideration to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with paraprofessionals and transportation.
Mr. Chair. I make a motion to, during the public session, and go to executive session to consider or to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining for the paraprofessionals and transportation, not to come back into open session.
Second.
The move in seconded, it's a roll call vote. Carrie?
Yes.
Robin?
Yes.
Yes, Steve?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you all very much. Our next meeting is actually a town, town meeting next Monday.
Town meeting's Monday?
Yep, it is. Thank you very much.